All right, can I call to need an order? First item is roll call.
Alderman Stanley.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Arum. Alderman Palace.
Here.
All right, uh, next time be invocation led by Win Geiger from First Baptist Church of Grand Valley, followed by pledge allegiance, Alderman Palace.
Sam, please. Father, we do thank you for this wonderful day that you've given us. We recognize it as a gift from you, as is every day, as is every breath. Father, we're thankful that in a world that seems to be falling apart on the outside, we recognize that you are in control, you're sovereign, nothing escapes your notice. Not a sparrow falls to the ground without you knowing about it. So, Lord, thank you for the fact that you are there, that you care about us, you provide peace and hope, comfort and strength. May we learn to lean upon you. Tonight, we ask for wisdom, we ask for grace, we ask for strength, we ask for your leadership in all that is said and done. We may bring honor and glory to your name, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one issue under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, have some changes to make to the agenda. First, under new business, I would like to add a line for discussion regarding a Green Valley newspaper. And then, second, under presentations, I would like to add a short sales tax initiative presentation.
Okay, that's the two then. All right, I'll entertain a motion then to add discussion under a, about a newspaper, under new business, and then a presentation regarding the upcoming sales tax election. Alderman Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley, any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All for the same sign. All right, agenda is amended.
Please no questions then, I'll move on to citizens' participation. Uh, we ask that citizens come forward to the podium and microphone and address the board and give your, uh, name and address for the record. Do you have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening?
Seeing none, move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move accept the consent agenda.
Avolus of Alderman West to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Palace. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All for the same sign. Seeing no previous business then, we'll move on to new, new business, which is discuss, discussion regarding a newspaper.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, I've been, uh, approached by Penny Cruz. Uh, several months ago, we were talking about, um, you know, different ways that she could help out in the community, knowing that the Green Valley Point, um, was an important part of the, the city. Uh, since that's gone away, uh, it's kind of left the city within the community. One of the consistent things that we talked about is communication and, um, being able to spread the word, get the word out. So Penny and I have started working on at least, uh, the idea of a business plan for a new, uh, newspaper for the city of, uh, Green Valley. Not city run, run by, um, Penny, it would be her own company. Uh, some of the questions that we've come across is if we wanted to treat this as some sort of incubator project. We obviously know that it would work well for the community. Um, circulation of a newspaper helps get people connected. Uh, the city could use it as a, um, legal, uh, record, you know, public notice record. There are, you know, quite a few things that, that it would be helpful within the community. And so as we started working through this process, I've, I've been visiting with the mayor, keeping him up to date. But some of the things that came up, uh, as, as Penny and I met were just what type of resources that we could provide. She, she can sell the advertising, she's comfortable with that. But there's, uh, needs that she would have as far as, um, a, a place to be able to work out of. Um, you know, software, that sort of thing. And just as we went through the list, like, this partnership kind of formed up a little bit better and I saw, uh, an opportunity to provide her with, with some of those things that she may need. You know, for example, she needs a, a tablet to be able to work with. Well, the city, um, recently has some surplus iPad tablets that, that we could donate, uh, for some sort of in-kind, uh, contribution, you know, for advertising through this newspaper. Um, office space, you know, we have these nine bar farms facility down there and tobacco. That property, there's what we call the gardener's house or the canning house. Um, it would be perfectly suited for an office. Uh, some of the software that the city, um, used to use that has been, it's outdated, but it still would work fine for her to get up and running. Um, we could grant the license to, to CS three and design software to her. Uh, and there's, there's other expenses that she would, you know, obviously encourage starting this up, which the city could choose to do some sort of loan or grant or in exchange, uh, advertising, uh, for any assistance or resources that would provide. So we kind of got to the point to where Penny and I have talked about it as much as we can and find out if we want to go any further. I want to have Penny comment, uh, at least answer any questions that the board may have. I'm happy to answer questions too. I just want to get your feedback and see what you guys think about this project.
Have, have we talked with independents at all about how they run their, and they've got pretty big incubator running there.
Uh, the independent, yeah.
Yeah, with the...
Um, we, I mean, we have a initial plan.
What, is it like a commercial kitchen one or something or doing there?
Yeah. From way back when, we have, uh, some plans for the newspaper. When Gary Bradley and, uh, Kathy Cox were here. But we haven't done anything. And, and that's usually something that we're on the economic development side of things. Uh, but with this project and the resources that the city has, it makes sense for us to be the one that would support that rather than asking EDC to do that. They have very limited resources right now.
I could probably explain a little bit about independents and the EDC.
You can know a little bit about that.
Their incubator program is run by economic development. Um, they're using the old hos- built hospital as the incubator program. Mostly, they have done catering type things because of the big kitchen that they had in the hospital. But I know that they have plans now to do other things besides that, um, with that incubator program. So, and I know the city just has a lot of different programs going on, um, in different areas of the city to do improvements and things like that as far as businesses go. But a lot of it has to do with franchise type businesses. But, yeah, they've got some pretty big programs over there, so.
Interested in lots of this.
I, I mean, I'd say that we can get it worked out. I mean, with, I mean, we can switch that to our paper of records for meetings and all the other public notices we have to give. And right now, we're paid for those. I mean, if we have equipment that we can surplus to her and then it's kind of a trade off, then, um, the paper would allow us to use that for our public notices. I mean, we're not, it's money we're spending anyway, so I mean, it's not like it's regoing to something that we hear from citizens a lot on about communication and, and those things. And I've talked to Penny and she feels pretty comfortable that she can sell enough ads and everything else to really, I think, cover all the rest of the stuff that she would need to come in. It's like her kind of startup, what you need from us.
Yeah, it's a startup. I've actually been out in the community and not really telling anybody, there's going to be a newspaper, but asking them if there was a newspaper, would their business be there to support it? And a hundred percent yes. So, um, and, you know, I've been doing some research and it's going to cost approximately five to six hundred dollars a page to pay all the printing costs, payroll, things like that, all the expenses, so.
Would it be, are you looking at, it being a free paper like before or by subscription?
Well, I'm looking at it in a couple of different ways. I'm actually looking at it as being a mailer. Um, I've gone and got prices from different printing companies, newspaper printing companies. Um, it really isn't going to cost a lot of money to mail them as much as I thought. There's like a three hundred dollar, you know, layup fee, you know, to get it all situated and then it's just a small amount, you know, per thousand issues. I'm looking at probably, um, twenty thousand papers. Um, I thought that the first issue I definitely send out free, but I would like to eventually go to a subscription paper. But I don't think right now, I, you know, you gotta put your fingers out and see what's going to happen. Um, I know I want to get some newspaper boxes and put them in Oak Grove and Buckner and they will have to pay for those, you know, probably seventy-five cents a issue or something like that. But they're going to want to pay for it.
You're looking at...
They're gonna, they're gonna like this paper.
Weekly, biweekly?
Uh, it's gonna be weekly.
Weekly.
Because if we do biweekly or we do monthly, then the news is old. We want to keep the residents up on everything that's going on with the school, with the city, with the community as a whole. So, um, it's probably going to be a weekly paper. And I'm looking at either two different dates for it to come out, either Wednesday or Saturday. I really like Saturday, but Wednesday is normally when all the store ads come out. So, I'm kind of torn between the two. I, I really would like the weekend papers, you know, because that would, uh, Wednesday probably will be what I'll be. Because I know the grocery store, I've already talked to them and they're all in. And, uh, so.
Is this something you want to start at the beginning of the year or...
Well, this is just me. I would like the first issue to come out November first, the first week in November. I want to have everything.
I wanted to ask, how many people, um, will it have employees, is it just Ms. Cruz or...
Right now, it would just be me and one other person. And...
Probably as a part, the other person would be some part time too, wouldn't they?
Right, right. To start with.
And you've talked about too, like utilizing maybe some of the high school students and stuff to write some of the stories, right, from the journalism class or...
I'm going to visit with the journalism teacher at the high school and see if I can get some participation with them as far as some of the school sports. And I'll probably have to hire somebody and pay them by the, you know, the article to write, you know, articles maybe for, uh, school board meeting or, you know, maybe city council meeting, you know, just some of those type of meetings, um, maybe sports. Uh, but that, that'll just kind of be like contract, just, you know, pay them by the article. So I have, um, some people that have talked to me, just asking me if I knew someplace where they could volunteer. So, I've been kind of eating that up, so I think I can probably use them in places, you know, if we wind up throwing a paper, then I'll have papers, people that can roll them and throw them, you know, and stuff, so. I've been working on it quite a bit.
What do you anticipate the, the cost of, let's say you've got forty-five hundred homes that you either mail or toss the paper to. Assuming you mail it, outside of the mailing cost, what, just hypothetically, do you have an idea what it would cost to generate that?
Well, I actually brought, um, the printing costs with me, with my friends, with a few different printing companies. And depending on how many issues that we do. Um, I went to the Examiner and they were extremely high. I really thought they were going to be less. Um, this other company that I went to, um, say if we did, uh, twenty thousand papers and it was a twelve-page paper, it would be thirteen hundred dollars. Then if we wanted to add color, which this printing company said that we can add color to every page if we wanted to. But I would, I would say front, back and maybe in the center. Um, it's sixty dollars, um, for each color pair. So if I had front, back and then the center, it'd be a hundred and twenty dollars for color, which I didn't really make the paper look good. I definitely want the front page to be colored. And actually, that would be charged back to them in the rate. I mean, we would lose our money.
Why, why would you want twenty thousand?
Well, I'm just giving you an example.
I understand, but the town's only got forty-five hundred houses.
Well, I'm, I went from ten thousand to twenty-two thousand. I wanted to know for each one of them, you know, how much it was going to cost. So I wanted that breakdown. So it starts at ten thousand, eleven thousand, on up to twenty-two thousand. So, um, you know, maybe for the first edition, we may want to do that much, I don't know. Um, I do know that, um, I did tell, um, one of the people I talked to that they have businesses in Oak Grove and they'd like to see Oak Grove get some papers and I told them that, you know, we were going to have some boxes that we could put out there. We'd put one in front of their store. But then they would have to pay cash, you know, they'd have to pay to get it out box, so. But, you know, we could go with fifteen thousand. I mean, if we did a twelve-page, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars per issue. So, you know, you're looking at almost four thousand, uh, just in printing.
Oak Grove currently have a paper?
Um... See, of that, and then they do their, you know, they have...
Yeah, they have to focus, but I don't know. Somebody from Oak Grove was telling me that, that they really have them in, so I don't know. I'll have to go over and check it out. Really what I want it to be is really about Green Valley. I want it to be about the things, I want it to be about the businesses, I want it to be the community as a whole. I mean, we, I want to have advertising that we get anybody's needs in this community, whether it be classifieds, whether it be churches, whether it be, um, business cards or, um, sponsoring a, a children's page. You know, there's going to be something for everybody. There's going to be something that, you know, they can pay for. It's not gonna, you know, but there's going to be something for everybody, so there'll be no excuses.
Along, along with that, do you anticipate like having a social media presence as you get things up and running to go with the newspaper?
When you say social media, oh, you mean like a website and...
Facebook, website.
It will be on separate, will be on LinkedIn, will be on Twitter, will be all of them. Will be on all of them. Facebook, we're going to hit them all. I, I do want to do a website and I don't want to do a website because if we go to a paper that people are going to have to pay for, if they can get it off the website, they're not going to worry about that. So that's something else I'm looking at, unless we can get them to subscribe on, to our website.
Thoughts, is this something that you want us to continue working on, pursuing or...
I do, yeah.
I'd like to see that.
I mean, the, the citizens have been asking for it on Facebook for twice in time when I saw it, so. That's one of the bigger things.
A lot of people don't have Facebook or a computer and they'd like to have that paper.
I think we can, we can help the community too, you know. It's like, there's a couple of senior citizens that come to the luncheon and they would just love to volunteer to maybe just answer the phone or whatever. So we're helping the community out with that, we...
You, you work with the point Penny and, um, and they never were able to get a subscription going on that, were they?
No, not really. There was a voluntary subscription and I will probably do something like that. Um, I'm really excited about a paper being here and I really want to see it stay and I want the community to be involved in it. And I know they're going to love it. And I think that, you know, it could be just some contribution or something to the paper.
Well, I think keep moving forward with it and get it laid out, wanting to lay out and, and make it happen.
So we'll do is we'll try to kind of create a business plan. We'll get Penny rolling on what she needs to do. We'll try to figure out, you know, cash flow, how, I don't know how to run a newspaper, but I'm pretty good at the business side of it, so I'm going to do what I can to help her with that and see if we can advertise and that sort of thing. In the meantime, we'll find what equipment that we have surplus that we could loan to the newspaper. We'll create, uh, a paper trail. That way it's, you know, we're not just giving stuff away, but we can show in-kind donations, help start up the newspaper and, um, just paper from there and try to keep it as clean as possible with, with transactions.
Now that, the, the canning house or whatever, I mean, is it, we forgot, is, is the wifi and everything good enough out there to...
Well, we actually have wifi that's, uh, I mean, you can put in now at the maintenance facility, the parks maintenance facility. We're working on that. Once that's up and running, then, then that, then it's a easy one, the city can also...
So they could figure it back off as something we're doing and they're not going to have to pay to have wifi or cable or something.
Correct, yeah. And if they did, we can always do something like some sort of, uh, partnering. You know, the city, for example, we were able to get, uh, they're called Jetpacks and their wifi hotspots pay forty dollars a month for a Jetpack for unlimited data. We can always set something up like that and, uh, have newspaper pay for that or again, there could be some sort of in-kind donation that we make in, in exchange for employment advertisements, city notices, publications. I, uh, the amount that we spend when we use Kansas Star, the payment or, I mean, it, it costs a fortune for those, those ads. So I think this would be very complimentary to what the city's trying to do and to better the community through publication.
And, and I think to your point, the key is making sure everything is, you know, visible and, you know, as far as what's happening with money or whatever the transactions are and...
Well, when we talked about it, I thought the incubator program sounded really good to me. The one thing that nobody's asked me is what's the name of the paper going to be?
And I already told you what it's going to be. What's it going to be Penny?
The Valley View, Gray Valley's Mini Newspaper.
That's the one we, that's, that's what I thought it was going to be. That's the one you said, wasn't it?
Well, I actually went in and did some research on papers from way back when. And everything that I put with Gray Valley is it, and the Gray Valley is that, the Gray Valley Tribune, the Gray Valley is that, nothing really hit me. So, and I know the high school does kind of like the view or something like that.
Isn't that, isn't that quarterly publication?
Our publication's called Citizens View, so. It's a great name.
You think so?
I love it.
Check.
I'm just not convinced the print media's, um, going to expand. It's, it's, to me, it seems like it's dying.
You know, I would say that for the bigger papers, but for the community newspapers, everybody in the community wants a newspaper. They want to see pictures of their kids in sports, you know, they want all community information. I think a community paper can survive more than a big paper. Look at the Examiner, and I'm not trying to be mean, but they're really struggling. And they're a big community. But I think a small community like that, I think if we had a good product for them, they'll be happy and they'll support it.
I think the key is being relevant and current and...
Exactly.
...involvement with all the different, you know, groups of people out there.
Oh, I got my whole list of all the groups I need to go talk to.
Alderman Headley, just to expand a little bit on your comments. Just, I want you guys to understand that as, as of now, we're looking at donating space and equipment, that sort of thing. We would obviously, we would come back to the board if there was ever a need for a grant or some sort of business loan, that, that would be authorized by the board. That's not going to happen, uh, in this startup, just from, from what I'm, I'm planning. So, the, uh, the equipment and space is what we're going to track as, as far as donations go and there won't be any money going from the city office over to the newspaper short of you guys approving some sort of small business loan program.
I just want to say, uh, Penny, that I think the newspaper's great. I think a lot of times, um, we are moving to the future, we're forgetting about the past. Nothing like being able to go back and archive and read something that was wrote back in nineteen sixty, uh, to go back and look at it, that's supposed to have on the internet and it's gone or you've got to look through a whole bunch of pages to find it. Uh, I do believe a lot of seniors, you can't expect them to go with time, they're not, you know. I give credit where the pass goes, I have, so I can imagine how it is. Everybody doesn't have a Facebook. A lot of people don't believe in computers and we can't make them do that. I, I do believe the paper here, uh, I think it would, I think it would last, as long as it's entertaining, it's accurate and exciting, I think it'll, I think it'll do well. A lot of seniors love to just read and watch their stories and have a cup of tea and cocoa or just talk. I think it would, I think it would do great.
Well, it's all about community support. You know, from the community, the people and the businesses and the city and the school district and, you know, the police department, fire department, everything.
Because I can tell you, look, I can...
We all have to work together.
I can tell you, when I ran for Alderman, I won, I missed the paper, didn't get it. I called Kansas Star and they sent me like twenty-five free copies. So if we didn't have a paper, I wouldn't have got that, so. They, it mattered to me.
If you think about it and if you look at the other papers, how many of these papers have Gray Valley News in them, really?
Never, really.
Sure isn't. The Examiner hardly ever does anything on Gray Valley.
Yeah, I, I occasionally get a call from Jeff, Jeff Fox at the Examiner asking me if anything's going on.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe.
I'll come to a meeting.
And unfortunately, a lot of people don't watch the news because there's so much negativity. So a lot of people, that's how I catch a lot of things from Gray Valley, watching the news or somebody else telling me what's happening in Gray Valley. I didn't know that one of our churches had closed down, when it closed down a long time ago. You know, it was nice to have a paper to know that, you know.
It's something positive for the community.
Yeah.
You know, call it fluff, call it whatever, but that's what I want. And all the other stuff that you hear everywhere else. But here, I want it to be about...
What, what involvement will, uh, economic development have in that?
Right now, I don't think we're really...
Well, I mean, I plan on talking, now that I know that the board supports that, I plan on talking to Rob, um, over at the EDC and finding out, you know, if, if he wants to at least be a part of the project. Um, their funding's pretty tight for a first year startup, but I think what Rob would probably do is talk to the EDC board and find out if they want to help support this or at least support the incubator program. And, uh, they'll, they'll kind of make that determination.
And particularly that board would be, be, I mean, be, be advertisers on that board too, so.
Yeah.
You know, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, with the businesses that participate in it. But I think EDC can definitely be a part of the newspaper, I mean, it's part of the attraction of Gray Valley.
Well, and the first incubator program that we've had.
She's recording.
All right. Uh, seeing no more new business, we've on to presentations then, sales tax presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I'm going to hand out the stretch parts that we've been circulating for the sales tax initiative that's on the ballot for August second. And I'm just going to give you a quick PowerPoint presentation of what this initiative's for. Um, it just kicked off. So, uh, August second, we are going, okay, Penny? August second, we'll have a, uh, an, an issue on the ballot and it's going to be question number one. Um, question number one is very long-winded, uh, and it was actually drafted by the legislature, but the question's going to be, shall the city of Green Valley, Missouri discontinue applying and collecting the local sales tax on the titling of motor vehicles, trailers, boats and outboard motors that were purchased from a source other than a licensed dealer? Approval of this measure will result in the reduction of a local revenue that will provide vital services for the city of Green Valley and it will place Missouri dealers, uh, Missouri dealers of motor vehicles, trailers, boats and outboard motors at a competitive disadvantage to non-Missouri dealers of motor vehicles, trailers, boats and outboard motors. So that's the question. Basically, what it boils down to is back in two thousand and twelve, the Missouri Supreme Court ruled that cities that do not have a use tax, um, which is, that's a tax that's, uh, it's very similar to a, a sales tax, but it collects on the purchase of items that are not, that are purchased outside of the city but used within the city. So cities that do not have a use tax would not, would be required to discontinue collecting local sales tax on, uh, out-of-state purchases of anything that has a title. So that's where the motor vehicles, boats, RVs, uh, trailers come into play. And because of that, uh, that ruling from the Supreme Court, it caused the local government community to start looking at options to preserve that, that sales tax. And so they gave us originally a deadline of November of twenty sixteen to finish, to, to actually pass them a measure within the community allows for us to continue to collect that sales tax. Um, the Board of Aldermen approved back in May this measure to go onto the ballot. And right after that approval, Governor Nixon signed a bill that extended the deadline to November of twenty eighteen. So, what we're trying to do is a big public education campaign and just let people know, one, what the language means exactly and, and how it translates into revenue for the city. So, one of the things people ask is if this is a new tax. It is absolutely not a new tax. This is a tax that the city's collected, uh, forever and a day. Uh, it is from out of state purchases. If I go over to Kansas and I buy a truck and I come back over here and register the vehicle, uh, I get, when I go to the Department of Revenue or to the License Bureau, I have to pay sales tax on it. That sales tax is then transferred accordingly to where you live, where you reside at. Um, how does the tax, uh, affect me? So, this is kinda, as I just said, this tax regardless of where you make the purchase, the tax once you come back to your home base, uh, the, the tax is collected from the Department of Revenue and License Bureau. And then it's sent to, uh, the Finance Director of the City of Gray Valley, if you live within Gray Valley. It's Oak Grove, Blue Springs, it's sent there. It does not matter where you purchase or where you license it. It's every, it has everything to do with where you reside. Um, does this tax have an impact on Missouri dealerships? It most certainly does. Uh, when the dealerships, anybody that purchased a vehicle in Missouri right now automatically has to pay that. The loophole is that if you purchase out of state, they're no longer required to remit their, to pay that tax when you come back into the state with that use. So if this tax were to go away, it would put all of the Missouri dealerships at a competitive disadvantage. Uh, because you would be able to go across the state line and buy a vehicle. And when you came back to Missouri, you would pay four percent less in sales tax than had they stayed in Missouri and purchased the vehicle. So this is really kinda what, where the education comes in. So what if I vote no? Uh, a no vote allows continued collection of the existing sales tax. So in this case, the infinite wisdom of, uh, legislatures or, you know, whoever decided this, no means yes. So if you vote no on this, city is allowed to continue to collect the sales tax. Uh, and it's only, it's obviously for licensed, uh, dealers within the state of Missouri. Uh, it allows continued collection of Missouri sales tax, keeps licensed Missouri car dealers competitive with car dealers located out of state. Again, that's because we're not having to, uh, you're not able to pay four percent less in sales tax if you buy out of state. It does not authorize any new taxes. So voting no does not authorize a new tax, it just continues to collect the same amount. Um, if you vote yes on it, uh, then that's going to discontinue the sales tax. It'll eliminate the collection of city sales taxes on motor vehicles, RVs, boats, trailers, uh, purchased outside of Missouri from dealerships and individuals. So when you bring that vehicle back into the state, um, if this is passed with a yes vote, you would no longer have to pay the local sales tax. Obviously, it reduces the local revenue used to pay for vital city, uh, services. And again, it puts the Missouri dealerships at a competitive disadvantage with out of state dealerships. Uh, you'll see that about five times in, in this because that's one of the most, it's one of the most dangerous things about this initiative is not only does it put them at a competitive disadvantage, but it shifts resources and businesses from the Missouri side to Kansas, in this case. Uh, so how much sales tax does Gray Valley get? The sales tax rate in Gray Valley is eight point four seven five percent. So for every one hundred dollars that you pay or that you spend, you pay eight dollars and forty seven and a half cents, uh, in sales tax. Of that eight dollars and forty seven and a half cents, uh, the city gets two dollars and fifty cents out of a hundred. So two point five percent is what we get. A half a percent goes to parks and rink, a half a percent goes to capital improvements, a half percent goes to transportation and one goes to the general fund. As you can see with the other ones, uh, the state tax is the largest share of it. They get, uh, four point two two five percent. Uh, Jackson County hits one point one two five percent. CJC, uh, gets a half of a cent. And then the zoo tax is, uh, point one two five cents. So what's the real impact to the city of Gray Valley? If we lose this, say, if, if, if this initiative passes with a no, with a yes vote, if the voters vote yes on this question, uh, beginning twenty eighteen, the city would lose a hundred and forty six thousand dollars per year, approximately. Um, fifty nine thousand dollars would come from our general fund. We'd lose twenty nine thousand from transportation, twenty nine thousand from park and twenty nine thousand from capital improvements fund. So the summary, short and sweet, voting no allows continued collection of the Missouri sales tax. It keeps licensed Missouri car dealers competitive without state dealers and it does not authorize any new taxes. Voting yes eliminates collection of the city sales tax on motor vehicles that are purchased outside of Missouri. They, it reduces local revenue used for the vital city services by about a hundred and forty six thousand dollars per year. And it puts Missouri dealerships at a competitive disadvantage without state dealerships. That's as quick as I can make it and be informative. So do you have any questions for me about this?
I have a question. So if people vote yes, it will be only Gray Valley not getting a piece of the pie. The state would still get their money.
They still get their money.
That's right. So, okay, this is sounds that way.
CJC had, they're on, is there, is there a separate question or they have, uh?
There is separate question.
Yeah.
Um, and they'll be on the ballot as well. CJC, uh, yeah, we have a regional group of cities that are doing this. It's the city of Lee Summit, Blue Springs, Oak Grove, Raytown, um, Independence, uh, and there's some others. And the city is not participating because they've had a use tax in place for years. It doesn't impact them.
Mm.
But essentially every community within the state of Missouri by twenty eighteen is going to have to pass a similar ballot measure where they lose that sales tax. So when you see the, uh, well, the zoo's not impacted by it, it'll be a new tax. CJC, uh, is impacted. Jackson County is impacted by it as well and the city of Gray Valley, that should afford a local tax restriction. Any other questions?
And, I mean, and it's more than just the money directly you're gonna lose. Cause I'm not gonna name any names, but we went out and talked to dealerships and there were dealerships that were upfront in Grand Valley that said they would be leaving the state of Missouri and go to Kansas.
Yeah, I mean, they just, they wouldn't be able to compete.
Yeah.
For example, um, if you look at a, an RV that costs a hundred thousand dollars, somebody buys that same RV on the Kansas side and we're talking, that's a smaller.
I mean, I mean, they have RVs up there. The old ones are up to about one twenty five that, you know, I'm talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, a hundred thousand dollar RV, you save four thousand dollars by driving across the state line, just in sales tax. So, that's a very real impact on our workforce, on community has, uh, dealerships. So, it is an important measure both for, uh, our companies. And all the companies that I've, that I've visited with, uh, are very interested in supporting this. Um, we have these cards out. We started working on these cards about a month ago and started coordinating with the local business owners, getting these out in their place of business, making sure that they're educated, talk to the customers about it. So, the city, the city is, uh, definitely doing the best that, that they can to educate. There is a political action committee out there called Keeping Your City Strong that, uh, has an opinion on how you should vote. That is all that I have for you, Mr. Mayor. There's no other questions.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess my last question is this, Rob, the citizens can see this? Is this on the record?
Yeah, that is, we've got it. That's the local businesses and stuff.
Or in the newspaper?
Yeah. I know that the political action committee, uh, little, uh, little billboards now on I seventy.
They're on, okay. The Santa bus?
Santa bus ain't red yet. And you'll notice signs pop up around town here too, so. From the political action committee.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So seen other presentations, no ordinances, no resolutions. We want to see attorney's report.
I'll look for it, Your Honor.
All right. See administrator's staff report.
Start with Ms. Bowden.
Hi, yes, I would just like to, um, ask the board if it would be okay to extend the current auditor for one more year on their contract. They've given us a quote of a five hundred dollar increase for next year. And that would, uh, include all the reporting required for the new ASB, CPA. And there's no ordinance or state statute that requires that we go out for bid at this time. So I just wanna make sure that I can move the board and, uh, preparing a resolution and offering them the contract connection.
This is beyond their original contract or whatever, right?
Right. The, the bid was for three years and two extensions and I've been out for quite a while and things are a little bit, I don't know that we could get a good bid together and out and get enough good bids back in the amount of time that we have and keep our, our time slot to where they get our information back to us in time. To me, all the bond reporting requirements have been reduced.
I motion that we renew our contract with our current auditors for you. So we need to, you got to bring a resolution forward too, right?
I'll bring one to the next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, you can go ahead and take a vote on that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I got motion from Alderman Johnson, Second Alderman West to, uh, Ms. Bowden to, uh, extend our current auditor to the next year just for five hundred, five hundred dollars increase. Project, right. Any discussions? Seeing none, I'll simply say aye.
Aye.
Also the same thing. All right.
Mr. Mayor, or I'm formally announcing that Police Department has appointed a police chaplain. Who definitely belongs with you and someone that we can count on to, uh, provide guidance for and assist in, uh, occasionally important, uh, notifications of, uh, deaths and so forth. And, uh, uh, we appoint Jewayne Guyer as the new police chaplain who will be starting that vehicle on our handle.
Thanks. Thank you for doing that for us.
Only two things I have, Mr. Mayor. I wanna remind everyone, municipal challenge kicks off, uh, Wednesday, uh, this Wednesday on the twenty seventh. It's the mayor's shootout and they've added this year, the city administrators shootout. So, it's gonna be at the Blue Springs Field House, uh, start at five thirty PM. I would encourage everyone, um, uh, it's gonna be a good time. If you've ever seen me shoot basketball, you'll get a good laugh out of it. Certainly, you'll understand why I went into business and spread some sort of athletic career. I think Alderman Johnson understands that after playing golf with me last week anyway, so.
For a minute I was a little scared. I thought you meant like shootout like with guns. I was a little scared.
Oh, no.
For a minute I was like, you two would, yeah, okay. That's good to know.
And then the, uh, that, that continues on, um, through the month of August, the next, uh, event after that, this Sunday, um, flag ball, flag football event, four thirty at the Blue Springs Field House. Cheney emailed the information out to you. If anybody wants to get it in, uh, let us know and we'll be working on that. The, uh, second item I had is that, uh, on September seventeenth, uh, we're gonna be honoring Darryl Jones, uh, as the Truman Harland Citizen of the Year at the Toast of the Towns event. Uh, we, as of right now, we have a full table, so we're gonna be doing two tables each year. And I need to get a head count from the Board of Aldermen as to who's gonna be available on the seventeenth to attend. So, if you would look at your calendars and either email Cheney or, uh, Kalila. And then at the next board meeting that we have, I'm gonna ask for an official head count. That way, uh, I wanna make sure we, we get all of the board, uh, accommodated first. But if we have available seats, I'm gonna open that up to our heads to go as well.
What time that will be?
It's at five thirty PM. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
We did have one more thing.
Oh.
We just wanted to let the board know that we knew, uh, Mr. Trout was gonna have a special event at the Speedway over the weekend with the monster trucks and the jet cars. Uh, so we had our code officer go out there and do the sound check. The highest average reading was, was one that was eighty two point three, which is still under the eighty five max. The next highest was only seventy three. So even with the special event, he did, uh, submit the conditions of the permit. I wanted to pass that on.
In, in that comment, I have hardly even noticed the track at all this year. Um, I don't know if it's quiet down or if the sound waves have just changed, but I hear it less than what I did previously.
That's the second we went out in the spring and then we've gone again and we did the same thing last fall, oh, and then unders. Go along with it. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, next up's Board of Aldermen reports comments. Alderman Palacek.
Um, can, what was going on with the trash citations, the trash can citations?
So, one of the companies, uh, apparently changed their day. So, the way our code officer, he knows, um, what day of the week each trash company comes and picks up trash. And he went out and said there were quite a few that were out that shouldn't be. Uh, what he didn't know at that time was that one of the trash companies had changed their date. Um, so it's kind of just a misunderstanding. So nobody actually got cited for anything, but he did put door hangers up. Um, when, in reality, they probably just went out there that day, the trash man.
Okay.
So, uh, let him know if we run into that in the future, we'd probably need to call that, that trash company and see if something's going on for the door hanging.
I guess normally they would like to, you know, just change and pick up date and usually like the city knows.
To be honest, that's the first one I know of that's ever changed.
They change the ads.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
And doing, have we heard any more about the Oak Transportation? We listen to that anymore?
Yeah, um, and I don't know if you can talk about it. It's kinda Shannon's, uh, project. If you feel comfortable up there. Yeah, I mean, he's got some, uh, prices on it. I think it was something that we were gonna look at, um, trying to maybe come to the board to include in the budget for,
Next year.
Uh, for next year. You remember what Shannon kinda talked, in a couple of months? It's kind of up to us on, you know, how many days, how long, uh, during the day we wouldn't have it available. Basically just kinda pay for what you want. Um, and he, off the top of my head, but he had examples of what some of the cities around here were doing, but they, they all did something a little bit different. Uh, but we didn't have that. One of the things we were thinking about doing is trying to partner with Blue Springs. Uh, they have a very similar, they, they have an Oak's program. Would be a good model to follow. And, uh, they, I believe their transportation days are Tuesday and Thursday. And they charge, uh, like a three dollar surcharge for the fee. It helps offset, but we will be coming to the board with the budget this year. Uh, and part of the public health budget will be utilized to support an Oak's program if the board wishes to start that. The only other thing I would add to, um, and trying to be more proactive and see what's out there for senior transportation, we've started, um, attending some different senior mobility, uh, groups. There's a couple of programs that, uh, got some startup money in Kansas City that might actually be, uh, useful, one being like a taxi voucher program. Um, that's run through the KC ATA. Right now it's just Kansas City, Independence, Sugar Creek. Um, it's a startup, but, well, kinda working with Truman Harland. It's kind of the ones that are trying to be the, the unifying voice, I guess, for Eastern Jackson County. So we are looking at those options too. We actually can have a meeting this Friday, um, where that, we'll all be attending.
Okay. Perfect. And just, well, thanks for stepping up and, and doing that. It means a lot to the guys and the wives too, so.
Alderman Headley.
Uh, just a reminder, I have tickets tonight for anyone that wants to, uh, participate in the fundraiser for Pathways of Honor, uh, August fourteenth from one to, one to three PM. Like to get a team together, the board and or staff and department heads. Um, so any number of us in the audience can provide tickets, so. That's all I have.
Alderman West.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Johnson.
Yeah, just, we'll have another meeting beforehand. A reminder that, um, August ninth is, uh, um, night audience crime. Tues, there'll be Tuesday following the next meeting. Um, they've told me they're doubling the, the chef's salary this year. So I'm getting twice, nothing twice. But I wonder if we, you know, if they're planning ahead to, you know, rather than just today before.
Alderman Stanley.
Um, yes, I wanna discuss, um, the transportation meeting we had this week, earlier this week, a little bit.
Um, yes, I want to discuss, um, the transportation meeting we had this week, earlier this week, a little bit. Um, we had, um, some of the citizens come out, didn't have a big turnout, um, but they addressed some concerns that we couldn't deal with there because it was about the transportation, the parking issues, it was not about, uh, they had a lot of issues with the kids doing, I guess, legal issues I want to bring up today. Um, but I know that they talked about the signage that was approved years ago, and they felt like they were, it's like they lost hope and faith in the city because it's like when they put the signs up, they were taken down within a matter, I think it's at a day or two, because one or two people complained. It was an agreement to put the signs up, and within a matter of twenty four hours, they were gone. So, um, that was a big issue, was not believing in us this time, because when they voted on it and it was passed, it was overturned within a certain amount of time, so they were upset about it.
It was more than one or two that we got.
Yeah, we, 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 we jumped the gun on that, we, um, listened to the few complainers, and, and it was not even the majority of the neighborhood that wanted the signs up, um, so we, um, immediately backed off that, so that's why we needed consensus if it's going to be.
Mm-hmm. So, um, they agree with us that the few people that came, that they, they agreed to just let it, see how it goes for the first ninety days with the high schools, with the parking spots available for all the students that are, um, eligible to, to, uh, have a parking spot and is eligible to drive. So we're going to do that for like ninety days, and we're going to, uh, know that, um, Rick is going to, he's going to supply our notes and our, uh, minutes on further we discuss, I want to wait until he brings it to you guys, I want to give you a little bit. But some of the things that they talked about, um, a lot of them talked about is being cursed at, uh, ignored when they're telling the kids to get off their property, um, driving in, uh, their yard, leaving trash, possible use and sale of drugs. Uh, I know one woman, actually a couple of them were very, um, adamant about, they don't know if nothing gets done, something's going to probably happen. And they stressed it like several times, if no one comes out and does something, God forbid if something happens. Because one woman said she has an infant, and they're right by her infant's door, window, she doesn't want to say anything because she don't want her, her house vandalized, she don't want kids doing anything to her house where her baby's at. Another woman said some kids threw, another kid's backpack in her truck, you know, it's just been a lot of stuff on their property, and they're like, this is it, they're, they're, they're tired of it. So they're expecting the law to get involved, or seems like they're looking to take the law in their own hand, they don't want to do that. So, uh, it really concerned me because they had a lot of issues with the kids hanging out, being disrespectful and just wondering what the guys can do.
I had a, I had a conversation with Dr. Willie, um, I think it was Thursday, was it last Thursday, Wednesday night, at, uh, Rob Harrington's, um, event for the EDC. And he was saying that with the work that's being done at the school this year, I believe it was three hundred new parking spots this year alone, with more to come, you know, through different budget cycles. Now, that doesn't mean, I guess, that all the kids will be able to park there, but it should relieve the pressure that we're seeing from that. Uh, I'm sure there's rules where kids can't park, or park, you know, depending on their grades or what have you, there's probably a number of others.
They lose their parking privileges.
Well, actually, he's, well, the only reason they lost their parking privilege was they were fighting for spaces. He thinks this three hundred will accommodate everyone.
I thought they lost, I thought they lost that, this was the primary reason.
Well, they, they did before because they wanted to give, they wanted to give the spaces to prove the kids that they felt deserved. Now that they have spaces for everybody, I don't think they're going to be doing that. Plus, they've also reduced the fee, what, what, forty or fifty dollars a year before, now it's thirty, reducing it to thirty. So, um.
But that's not what the citizens feel, they feel like some of the kids, like you said, Mayor, they're kicked out because of doing other things they're not supposed to do.
And, and this, you just throw out parking over there, we're probably still going to have kids going over there and hanging out.
And that's what the PD's just going to have to watch it, I mean, which they do, I mean, they watch it currently, so. I just want to stress that, these people stressed it several times that they're tired. I mean, they stressed it several times that enough is enough, and they're ready to take and have it into their own hands. I don't know if anybody on that board heard them, I heard them, they're like, they're tired, it's either their safety, or it's either them or them. So, and they're saying one woman says she has, her child has medical issues, and it's hard for the paramedics to get down, the fire truck to get down. It's another lady that's disabled, she can't, uh, get down there, and I had made a suggestion, but if you don't have a handicap, um, uh, license of permit, that's probably going to help out. But it was just a, a lot of just frustration of them, and most of the people have been living here for twenty something years, and, and one woman said twenty six, one woman said fourteen, it's, they've been there for a while, and, um, they, the comments was, it's easy for people to say, get over it, they don't live there. You know, I don't live there, so I can't express what they're going through, I wouldn't want to, but they're just really upset. They're really tired of all the disrespect and, you know. Well, he's going to get back with us, Rick, and I'll make sure he sends it to you, but.
The only thing I respond to, uh, is, uh, we encounter the same problem, we will assign any call service, simple and for any that neighborhood is in a problem, you have some of the, uh, other neighborhoods, when they see a problem and they encounter, uh, a parent or a kid or whatever, that is not the time to, you know, make so many, get into the debate, and people complain that they're not getting calls, they're not calling.
And I told them that too.
They're to the car, they're here right now, and, uh, you know, and school officers are aware of it, and transit shows, that was important to all, you know.
It, it was just shocking, it said that kids have just purposely ran people's cars to get through, or to keep pushing cars back and forth to get in a spot. I'm looking like, oh my God, and so you can't stand some, some of the things that that happens over there, I'm like, man, so, just want somebody to tell me about it so something bad happens, so. Pretty much all I have.
Uh, next time, Mayor's report. I don't have anything to add this evening, but we do have a need for executive session for which reasons?
For a legal and for real estate.
Legal and real estate. So I'll inter- inter- entertain the motion then to adjourn into executive session. Not a motion. Second. Second Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Also the same sign.
Alderman Palczek.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Stanley.
All right, we'll adjourn to executive session.